Yeah, I'm just gonna give everybody a second who may have been kicked out to log back in again if they want. Let's just see if we get a few people in here. We have people with real names now, so that's a good sign. And there's a few more adding in, so we're just gonna give it a second. Yeah, it was just people with phone numbers. Technology is great until it's not, right? Okay, thank you, everybody, for that indulgence to get us all back online and welcome back to all of you folks who were online and maybe got kicked off. Ma'am, come on up, please. Thank you. And just pull the microphone down to your...
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. My name is Martha Cummings and I live at 340 Glen Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all for allowing us this opportunity to speak tonight. We're all grateful for that. I believe that the best discussions happen when there's a merger of the left brain, which is logical, and the right brain, which is a bit more creative. So I'm going to attempt to do that in my remarks tonight, and I thank you for indulging me. In 2002, after the unexpected passing of a beloved family member, it was a devastating time for me, and I needed to find a way to grapple with her passing and figure out how to take one day at a time to make it through. The very next day, I started what would become a ritual, not just for the immediate aftermath of my loss, but for the over two decades that followed. I leashed up my two dogs, walked the 29 steps from my front door to Sacred Heart Field, and let my dogs lead. They took me alongside historic stone walls, across spacious fields, down to the river, and back up through the woods to those open spaces again. Every day, we took to Glen Park for an hour or two, and every day, I left my house feeling a little less aimless and returned to my house with more acceptance and more hope. That is because as soon as I set foot inside Glen Park, even to this day, I feel different. I take deeper breaths, find company in the quiet, and meet others who understand the joy of just walking a dog or tracking the clouds or pausing to watch a mother owl and her owlets nesting in a tree. I am also well aware that I feel safe there. Over my 25 years of living in Portsmouth, I have walked through Glen Park at least 10,000 times, and I fully believe that that space heals people. Because those who enter the park simply to enjoy nature have made it a priority to let go of technology, social media, and over-scheduled activities to do something different, to tame the mind. We owe it to ourselves and to our children, now more than ever, to understand the value of quiet, calm, unscheduled ways to spend our time and to recognize the absolute privilege of having something so precious so near. Many years ago, at a land trust meeting, someone said that percentage-wise, there is more preserved open space in Manhattan than there is on a quidward island. It is far worse now. I used to be able to look out my back window and see nothing but farmland. Now I count more than 30 houses, miles of asphalt, and a fraction of the beautiful trees that were once everywhere. I can feel the tightening and dwindling of open space in Glen Park too. But, at least for the moment, it still represents a rare and refreshing and safe escape, one that distinguishes Portsmouth from neighboring towns, nurtures genuine and considerate human interaction, and is central to why I chose to live here over anywhere else on the island. The other day, while I was out walking, I came upon 10 boys who were playing tag and having an absolute blast. Tag. No man-made gadgets, no high-tech equipment, no schedule, no coaches, no tournaments, no impact on the physical surroundings, no danger to anyone anywhere. I walked over to a mother who was standing on the side and told her that it made me so happy that I didn't even know kids knew how to play tag anymore. She smiled and said, "Yes, it's nice, isn't it? It's just so simple." My dog then led me along the outer perimeter of the park, down the hills, into a portion of the woods, and through an opening in the stone wall back to our home. It was a lovely day, and one I hope to be fortunate enough to live again and again and again with your help. I am begging you to protect this open, natural, safe, and calming space that has certainly healed me at times and, I am sure, countless others along the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Dungen and I live at 124 Cory Lane in Middletown. My ministry is called The Sacred Center, and it is centered at Common Fence Point Community Center. So I have a lot of investment in Portsmouth. And June through September of this past year, I offered a free beginner Tai Chi class every Tuesday morning in the Picnic Grove, which is a narrow shaded section of Glen Park. And there are two holes proposed to be there. So if that comes to pass, I don't think I'll be able to continue that. But maybe what I want to say more than anything else is that I think I represent what's possible at Glen Park going forward. Wendy Bullock was helpful in letting me get my permit through, and probably 30 people a week gathered with me in that location. I had hopes of expanding that this summer, maybe encouraging other movement teachers to come and bring their classes there as well. I could imagine, if space allowed, that there could be movement and meditation there every morning all summer long. So I just don't understand how that would be compatible with the disc golf as it is currently proposed. So I wanted to express how much I've enjoyed offering that to the community, and I would love to continue to do that if it's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any reason why you could not continue to work with our excellent Recreation Department Director and continue to have your classes there.
The Picnic Grove was optimal because it's shaded.
It is. Yes. It does get warm down there.
Yeah, but my seniors need the shade, and I didn't find any place else in the park that would be adequately shaded.
I don't want to speak for everybody up here, but there might be a few seniors.
Yeah. I'm one of them.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening.
Hi there. My name is Dr. Sarah Natompauli. I live at 400 Glen Road. Okay. I posted a similar kind of sentiment on the All Things Portsmouth page several weeks ago because I didn't hear about disc golf until very recently, so I apologize. I am guilty as charged. I did not know what was happening. I do think there's a problem of general disengagement from politics at the local to the national level, which I think we can all agree on. In what I posted, I wasn't as eloquent as Martha, but it was along those lines. And I just want to read a few of the responses I got when I posted that and didn't know what was going on in my neighborhood. "Your Aunt Nancy already said this: Go back to bed. You need to sleep on this nonsense." "Oh, stop the whining." "Creep. Why the hate on a sport encouraging people to get outside? Go cry someplace else. Never going to sign your petition." "Hey Karen, if you follow leash laws, you should be fine. I'm sure you complain when you see kids playing catch too." "Cry harder. Nobody cares. Use the space." So I would urge us to think at a broader cultural level why more people don't know what's going on and aren't engaged, but appreciate all your work so far on this and hearing our point of view today. So while disc golf might seem like a low-risk sport, there's a significant body of evidence showing that bystander injuries do happen.
Folks, 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 please, please stop. Listen, we can stop in the audience, or we can stop completely, and we'll move on to the next agenda item. Please stop.
Okay. Emergency room records do not completely reflect the sports in which folks are injured. But when these disc golf injuries happen, lacerations to the face, in 2022, there was a report out of Illinois detailing a child hospitalized after being struck in the head at a public park. There are numerous injuries associated with this sport. And Mr. Hamilton, I'd like to argue that this disc golf is fundamentally different than other sports. It's putting innocent bystanders at risk who are walking by on these paths, just like Martha, just like the Tai Chi players, just like kids in strollers, dog walkers. And it's a very limited, constrained space to be experimenting with this kind of new sport in the area that we don't know how it's going to play out in a space that it hasn't been hosted in before with these parameters. So beyond safety, there's also the liability issues that, of course, again, are different than these other sports. It's not like getting kicked by a horse or these sort of very well-known sports like softball in circumscribed spaces. I do feel like this perhaps may be new information. I was also told that you hadn't had a good look at different kinds of heavy discs that are quite fundamentally different than a frisbee itself. So this isn't about being against recreation or people having fun. It's about using common sense. A multi-use community park simply isn't the right or safe place for high-velocity sport like disc golf and would obviously welcome this in another space in our community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for all those people online. There are a bunch of keyboard heroes in general who like to chime in on websites. Ms. Schmidt?
My name is Gloria Schmidt. I live at 75 Linda Terrace in Portsmouth. I research and write about Portsmouth history, so my perspective is a little bit different. I went back and looked at the newspaper accounts when the citizens of Portsmouth decided to purchase this. And yes, it was for Elmhurst School, but that was a small part of it. The rest of it was to be green space, open space. And the intention was for this to be to the benefit of the people of Portsmouth, to come, to have an open space, to have nature there. Portsmouth is heritage, as it says, a farming community. And part of that is the Glen Farm. And Missy Taylor, descendant of the Taylor family, is here with us today and supplied one of the letters. And one of the things that I... When we start losing some of these spaces, we're losing some of our heritage. And we... The Gentleman Farm is part of Portsmouth farming heritage. We no longer have Sandy Point Farm. We no longer have Oakland Farm. But we do have this gem of a place, and people have mentioned that just being there, having that environment is an important thing for our health and well-being. And it's also important for us to realize our history and to be able to appreciate the very special spot that we have in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Ms. Davidson?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rosemary Davidson, 175 Frank Coelho Drive. I'm going to read my speech, which I wrote in my chair last night. So it's old school. Once again, I stand before you, never expecting, in all my years advocating for Glen Park, that I would have to plead with people who supposedly care for Portsmouth to realize the jewel the park is to Portsmouth and to keep it as natural and undeveloped as possible. It is fast becoming an amusement park. Well, with all of that acreage designated at the Upper Glen, you would think that would be enough for recreation. Unfortunately, the powers-to-be see dollar signs when they see Glen Park. This beautiful property has been lovingly tended to through the years by so many who volunteered their love and sacrifices and services to developing and servicing this gem. Thousands of hours of work and planning have gone into the park as you see it today, except for a couple of eyesores. You have an obligation to preserve this town property, just as we have preserved Melville Park, Fort Butts, the Black Regiment Monument, Founder's Brook, and the Glen Manor House. It is only a few acres of beauty in a town that is fast being overtaken by everything under the sun with really not much rhyme nor reason. Someone gets a personal whim and decides to invade property that was voted for and cared for by townspeople for the use of the townspeople. For many years, there was no budget for Glen Park. When I retired a few years ago, the budget was $5,000. How was that kept low? By volunteers. Volunteerism is there, but it's mainly for the benefit of people's children. Were you there or even know when the volunteers built the ball field, put in electricity, made the natural amphitheater and the Elsie Hopper Picnic Grove? Have you painted buildings, cleaned bathrooms, donated stoves and refrigerators and freezers for the kitchen? Were you there when Lions Club volunteers poured the cement slab and built the pavilion? Were you there when we had to find volunteers to rake leaves, paint the riding ring, or when Little League girls softball needed a field, so use the one that was built at the Glen? Did you repair stone walls when they were damaged? Stone walls that were built at the rate of five feet a day? Did you attend the many wonderful family events? Like fests, the bicentennial weekend celebration, barbecues, concerts, wonderful three-day, 4-H feasts through the years? Did your family go sledding and have family picnics? Mine did. Did you attend a scout jamboree, a ham radio weekend, yoga weekends, the Potter League walk for many years? High school cross-country meets? Well, all that happened, and so many people worked tirelessly to make it so. And their vision should never be forgotten. People like Frank Coelho, Gilbert Barker, Mary Day, Elsie Hopper, Dr. Robert Davidson, Grace Kennan, and all of her committees. You can't just throw their efforts aside. Their vision was for open space for all to enjoy. The Town Council always supported keeping the park for townspeople. It would be a travesty to clutter the acres of Glen Park with all that paraphernalia. It simply does not belong there. Stand up and have some foresight and preserve this park for posterity. People today think in the moment how fortunate we all are that many before you did not think that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
I'm sorry. I am emotional.
Mr. Roberts?
Peter Roberts, 80 Armard Avenue. Okay. What I want to talk about is the injuries that were mentioned. When you play certain sports, you know you're going to be injured. And when your kids are going to be played, you're told it's going to be that way. Now, in golf, you can get hurt if you hit a ball and it hits a tree and hits you. But people who are walking around it, no, they don't expect to get hurt from it. And golf courses have enough room where you won't get hurt. And I know, I played golf, all right? And to talk about all the injuries in sports, yes, there are. I played sports. I got injured. My kids played sports. And they got injured. And everybody does. But to bring up everything that happens at all the other sports at Glen, they know they're going to get hurt. So to give you the counts and numbers is a joke. Don't even listen to that kind of stuff.
Mr. Kessin, I'm assuming you're coming to the podium, sir?
Yeah.
All right.
Very slow.
I see that. I'll give you some time.
Mr. President, Paul Kessin, 3241 East Main Road. I'm gonna come at you at a different angle. I have this piece of paper dated 12/3/24. I'm assuming this was council backup. And this was presented to the council and the Recreation Committee. What I'm concerned about, because I've helped farm areas like this. Okay, one being Kempena Boulevard, Kempena Nursery, which is behind the old Christmas tree shop, and my friend over at Rhode Island Nurseries. We used to do hay over there when farmers helped one another in the 60s and even before that. And Frank Coelho was a much younger man then. But this, on page five of this document, it shows a path going onto a piece of grass, very similar to what I believe is going to be in a very critical area at Glen because it's built on the side of, you know, land facing to the river. What I would like to bring to you guys is every time we hay a field at Boulevard Nursery, behind the old Christmas tree shop, and you always have to do Rhode Island directions, there was always a good chance of a washout. And this proposal does not show any topographical characteristics in on this, where this course is in fact shown. But it's in the amphitheater, which is a pretty steep piece of land. I think that is critical to have this council or somebody end this agreement if, in fact, it becomes detrimental to losing the park. I don't see it any different than if I went to the Tennis Hall of Fame and I watched tennis there, and the baseline is worn. Where the second player plays close to the net, it's never worn out. And I think on and off the tees, and there's eight of them in the amphitheater area, where that high-traffic area is going to be no different than golf at Montauk on a autonomy. Matter of fact, Montauk just paved theirs. They use carts, but it's a high-traffic area. And I would ask this council to end this agreement if we, the people in the town of Portsmouth, are going to lose this prized piece of land because of repeated use on and off tees and on and off greens. You've made a decision. I'm glad I'm on this side of the microphone. I would ask that if you figure out that this is the wrong thing, you guys change your mind pretty quickly. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kessin. I will state again that this is a two-year trial period. It is not a permanent installation. If all of the concerns do come to light, then it will not be renewed after those two years. Ms. Davidson, I love you. I have done a lot of those things, a lot of those things that you mentioned, including painting the riding ring and cleaning toilets and everything else. It does. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this topic? We have a subsection B, which is a request for... I'm not going to spill your beans, Mr. Gleason, but I believe it's a request to establish an MOU with the group through the Recreation Department. So if not, we will move...
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just... Yeah, I just, I wanted to ask the DPW and Wendy Bullock a question regarding this before we move on even to the next agenda item. So, Paul, what is your understanding of the role of DPW in this disc golf endeavor? How much is this going to, do you think, is this because we don't have any plan, is going to cost the town from your discussions with Park and Rec? And how much is this going to impact on your time?
Council President, members of the council. Right now, it seems like just mowing. Like Keith said, it's going to be a two-year trial period. So we can see what goes on in the wear and stuff after that. But as far as I can see, it's just mowing. Most of the mowing's done already. There's one area that we usually grow hay that would have to be mowed a little bit longer, but I don't see any further maintenance problems.
So, and do you see any further costs associated with this from the town?
No.
None. Okay, thank you. Wendy, the same goes, the same question. What is your understanding of your role with the disc golf endeavor? And how much is this going to impact? How much is it going to cost the town, if you've done any cost analysis, from your discussions with Park and Rec? And how much of your time do you envision this taking up?
I don't see much of my time. Now we have a new Assistant Director, and I feel that we can make this happen. I said at the last meeting, I don't see many costs. Yeah, I think our department can make this happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I don't see much time and I don't see much cost, but I'd just like something a little bit more than that. But maybe we can get into that in the next thing because it does seem, when you're talking about an increase in use, to the extent that I think we're talking with tournaments and then regular recreation, scheduling is going to be a big part, correct?
Yes, and we have a system for that. We have Civic Rec, and folks will go on and reserve their time. If it's a league or a tournament, that will be reserved through Civic Rec and managed by the Recreation Department.
Yep. So just a point of clarity here, too. When this all started, it was said that the 401...
501C.
501C was going to be established, and they were going to have... It was going to be under their jurisdictions. This is what I heard at the beginning. Has that been established, do you know? Because it seems like it's shifted from there to now our Town Park and Rec. Is that your understanding?
I think we're going to work together.
So the fundraising arm of the disc golf will be the 501C3. The ownership of the park and the disc golf features will still be part of the town. So the 501C3 won't own anything, won't have any more rights to the park than an average citizen, softball, soccer, volleyball, dog walking.
Will the 501C, will they be the ones incurring the costs? That's what it sounded like at the beginning.
That will be part of the MOU, so you're getting into the next thing.
Okay.
But yes. It is, they have promised to raise the money to begin the construction and also maintenance. That's part of this two-year trial. If in two years, the town's spending $10,000 to maintain a disc golf course, it won't be there.
What happens if in one year?
We can revisit it, but we have a two-year agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
And welcome aboard to your new assistant. Mr. Skian, one last comment?
To clarify, based on that statement...
Can you get a little closer to him, so we can just...
Hi, this is Emily Skian. And I did follow up with the Director of Parks and Recreation when the decision was made with a list of questions, asking very specific staff-related questions. And she was, she said, "I will direct you to a citizen." I feel that our staff Recreation Director has the responsibility to respond to a citizen with a specific question about the disc golf course and not direct it to a volunteer on a committee. I was disappointed with our staff doing that. And I still don't understand, how can you say a 501C3 is going to have equal access as a citizen walking? Understand, if you have a tournament and they pay the nominal $1,200 fee, while they're not actually providing what other leagues are doing when they have tournaments, you haven't asked them...
How do you know?
I mean, I was here when the soccer representative defined what they offer our town and pay the exact same fee. But my point is, I still do not understand, especially if someone can check out discs from the library and use it whenever they want. I don't understand during this two-year period how any current use will continue to exist in the exact same perimeter of the park with someone who's now determined that they're playing. How are we having equal access as a citizen using that park as the 501C3?
Because you're making the assumption that there's going to be somebody on every hole, every minute of every day, as opposed to if I want to get up and walk my dogs at 6:30 in the morning, I'm still going to be able to go up and walk my dogs down to the beach and come back out and not have to worry about getting hit by...
Like constantly looking around, like, you know?
I think we're going back to the hyperbole of...
We have hearing impaired people, we have vision impaired people. I mean, I'm trying to understand, if you have a designated time, if you want to designate and enforce a time for disc golf, I will avoid that time. But right now, I don't feel safe. I'm sorry, I don't feel safe. And I understand there are other activities. But as we've all said, there are perimeters to that use of the park. Everyone else can go there at any time and enjoy it without constantly listening, walking, looking. And you come out of the woods, you're not, you have no idea what's around the corner. So I just don't understand how existing residents feel that it can coexist. And our Parks Recreation Director has not explained...
Have a true two-year trial period to see if it can.
Until there's a lawsuit, I just, I don't really understand.
Mr. Penny, last comment, please.
Just a question. I just want to gain a clarification, because you had stated on record it would just be for recreational use. But yet I keep hearing tournaments, leagues and whatnot.
Still considered recreational. I don't think we're going to have the National Association of Disc Golf coming in here having a $10,000 tournament.
So within, you know, the next step, what you're going to address, is that going to be clearly defined?
Yes. We had, we had already intended to have an MOU. Mr. Gleason just happened to piggyback on this one. So, Mr. Gleason, I'll let you go.
Just one second, could I have another moment?
Yeah.
Hesitantly. I just have a prepared question or... But after hearing what we've heard tonight from the citizens, I don't even know whether we heard anyone other than Roderick to speak in favor of it, which unfortunately, had we heard what we heard tonight at our previous meeting, especially the one we voted on, I do believe the vote would have been different.
I don't know that.
No, I'm just...
I understand. We did hear from people, we heard from some of the same people.
Right, I know. I also believe that at the night of that meeting, we heard from many out-of-towners too. And I guess I would ask, hearing what we've heard tonight from our citizens, who I believe have done an incredible job researching and getting information, I believe I would ask you, Mr. President, that you request that we bring this back for further reconsideration.
Point of order. I will not. Point of order. I'm sorry, point of order. Alright, I'm really going to make this the last comment. Go ahead.
Matt Yates, 433 Windstone Drive. I'm here as a proponent of disc golf.
Thank you. I believe the proponents came out at the last meeting. There were many of the same people who were here at the last meeting who were against it. We heard a two-sided conversation. It's a two-year trial. We're going to give it two years and see how it works. I pray to God that nobody gets hurt. Nobody gets run over on Glen Road and it gets associated with disc golf. But I think we've gone too far and too extreme to explain a sport. The Glen is still preserved. The Glen is still walkable. The Glen is still going to be used for soccer, softball, 4H. I mean, I'll add something you didn't add. I remember the tractables. You know, lots of fun. Great. We're not hitting golf balls. Alright. Mr. Gleason, no, 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 we're done. We're done.
My name is Missy Taylor and I'm a Portsmouth resident. And I appreciate this time. I'm not a public speaker. I have a great deal of emotion right now and gratitude for all of you. God bless you.
Ms. Taylor, I'm going to ask you to communicate it this way though, please.
Alright, sir. What I do just want to add, I want to stand behind my writing, which I hope has held its own.
It has.
But I had an experience on Thursday that I think was a godsend. And I was coming from a seminar at URI. And I had my little dog with me. And we travel a bike path. It's a lovely walkable bike path in South Kingston. And we went there that day, late afternoon. And it was very well-traveled, it was a beautiful day. And we felt, it was a bit crowded. So we got off the beaten path and we went into the woodland area. And I heard something, we were going along. It sounded like a drone to me. And at that point, I picked up my little dog. And out of the woodland came a young man with discs. And I couldn't get over it. He was playing disc golf. And I did not mention any of this experience, what I'm personally, what I feel contending with. But I asked him about the game and if we could accompany him for a little while. There was a woodland that was quite separate from the walking trail. And it was very beautifully laid out. It was many, many acres down in South Kingston. And at that point, he said, I don't feel comfortable giving his name because I did not ask permission. But he is a varsity sportsman in two sports at URI. And he comes out there to train. And as he says, to develop his arm. And he said, "I'd love you to come along with me, but would you mind, do you think your little dog would mind if I put her in my backpack? Because she could be killed out here." That's what he said. And I thanked him very much, the loveliness to that young man and the consciousness of him. And my little dog loved him. And he put her in his backpack. And I traveled with him for about six holes. It was the first time I saw the baskets. He said, "There will be a lot of clearing that goes on." And you saw great sand pits all around. And there were several other fellows. He said, "We come out here to train for the football and basketball. And we're able to clock our speeds and we're averaging about 60 miles per hour." So I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
It was brought up and I just want to, Rich, if we could follow up and just make sure meeting minutes have been addressed, not just in Parks and Rec, but across all departments. Can you just verify that for me? Because that is important.
Sure, I'll...
Thank you.
Shout out to every committee.
Yeah, I like to speak on that. When I was on the Park and Rec Committee, I was doing the minutes. And when I, you know, got on the council, I had asked the Chair multiple times on the minutes. I asked if they could be put on our website, our town website, as well as the state. And I was told that it was not, they are an advisory committee and that the minutes did not need to be put on our town site, which I think they should. And I think they're just not kept up. They don't have a secretary, I think, at this time on Park and Rec. But I know that they're behind.
Mr. Gleason?
Not an excuse. They should be updated.
Thank you. Mr. President, I just want to finish up Mr. Reese's agenda by saying, thank you for bringing that forward to us and for all of you that came out and spoke tonight. I know it's been said here that we had all the information that we needed so far. But I found this, a lot of this information to me was not covered thoroughly. I don't know how Parks and Recs can say that they came up with this plan after X amount of study. I mean, I don't think, I think somebody thought it was a great idea to have disc golf. And it might be, I don't know, the jury's out on that. But, you know, it's going to happen here unless, I mean, the only thing is, there is no vote here. Solicitor could tell us, somebody in the future, near future, could bring this back for reconsideration. But that's one of the four people that voted in the affirmative. I'm not one of those, I did not vote.
Actually, that's sort of a motion to reconsider at the same meeting. But anyone can come forward with a motion at a subsequent meeting to amend the prior vote or to redo the vote. So that doesn't require somebody who was in the majority to move that in the future. But for this agenda item, it, you know, the establishment of the memorandum, that can be voted on tonight by...
Absolutely.
It's an independent agenda item and whatever standards you put on there are valid.
Sure. And I guess I offer up this, the suggestions here for the memorandum of agreement or understanding as a consolation prize, that we, the council, are going to approve the rules that this league would have to abide by and to do it in the safest fashion that is possible. Mr. Reese recommended, and it's in one of my notes that I'll go through here, that we have this designed by a professional. And that, to me, means that they look at what we've designed, if that's a, you know, a starting point, to find out whether it actually fits into the Glen. And it can cover the mixed-use facility that we have there. So basically, I'm asking to establish a memorandum of agreement with potential stakeholders and users of any disc golf facility that is established in the town of Portsmouth. I'm requesting that the following be considered for inclusion into the agreement with additions by other councils, obviously. And those would cover a specific language about insurance requirements for the league play, for the organization, the 501C3 organization that would have to come into being. I believe they're already organized to be able to go forward with this agreement. There would be pricing set by the Parks and Recs Committee for individual play. I assume people can go there as long as they're using the Civic Rec, I believe it's called. But I would expect it to be a fee for league and tournament play, which we would be entertaining by the Parks and Rec people. Any sponsorship advertisement for me? I'd like to see it confined to language on the south side of the Boy Scout Bridge, on the proposed holes of one and two. And any additional advertisement on individual holes would be on the four-by-four posts at proposed tee boxes as QR-type codes. All other sports down there currently advertise for their sponsors. And I don't think we should refuse the request for advertising, but I think we should keep it to a minimum. Again, the course must be designed by a professional entity to ensure the safe continued multiple uses currently at Glen Park. Simple thing, the baskets are to be determined as far as color, whatever.
I thought we decided green.
I don't think we...
I thought we decided green.
Well, we put down on here the agreement, the basket's green.
Yes.
Specific days may be assigned by the Parks and Rec Director where disc golf would be unavailable for play. An example would be a 4H event, that kind of thing. A reminder of all behaviors not permitted in public. Couple new ones that I hadn't thought about tonight were mentioned, speeding, littering, obviously no alcohol or any smoking, et cetera. And other inclusions by the Town Council or Parks and Rec Director. Also, what came up here that's not really covered in my initial thoughts is something that would define the reason or a reason to end the trial period early. You know, what would be the bad things that would happen? We could say, alright, let's bring this back to the table and we could stop it before the two-year period. So hopefully that wouldn't happen. But those are the things I'm looking for with other inclusions by other councils.
Mr. President? Mr. Bear? Thank you. I'm not opposed to having an MOA with any organization. I'm just concerned that more, one question for Roderick. And you could just clarify for me, since the time of the approval by the council, have you made any, have you, has anyone purchased any sponsorship? Or have you made any promises for level of sponsorship?
Yes, we've actually collected, I think it's over $6,000 right now. We have multiple local businesses that have already sponsored holes. We set up the non-for-profit. We're pretty deep into this. We were actually hoping to maybe start construction a little early since it's been so successful, kind of where we're at right now.
What type of advertising promises have you made?
So we, so we wanted to keep the advertising down to a bare minimum and not, you know, keep Glen Park, we don't want signs anywhere. We're going to have one small sign in the parking area with a little QR code.
The QR code would work.
Yeah, yeah, QR code where you would just, when you arrive at the park, you click on that. And then all the rules, like, you know, the park will be closed during track meets. The park will be closed during 4H fairs. You know, also like the layout of the course. And also advertising would come up on your phone. We don't want to put signs around the course. On the rim of the basket, which is like the top rim, we're just going to put a little thing, this hole donated by, you know, so-and-so. But no signs, just a little, you know, insignia, if you will, on it, stating that this person helped donate the funds for this. And also to bring on Mr. Gleason, we had the design looked over by a disc golf professional, John Huck, that looked over the course design, said it would work well for what that was, for the space we have. So it wasn't designed by a professional, but we had a professional look at our design. And he said it was a good design.
That was my next question. And Mr. Rayner... And Mr. Rayner and Ms. Bog, I'm not sure if either one of you would be able to answer this. Do we require the professional? Do we require professionals to build out any of the other fields that are on town property? As part of any MOU or contract?
I'm not aware that we've built anything.
No, but we would have an engineer-designed.
I'm just I'm just I'm just trying to make sure that what we're putting in here is comparable to what we do with other leagues.
We would bid this out. The engineer would come back with standard business practices or professional requirements.
I mean, the last athletic field we did was the track and the football field and the tennis courts. All that was done with a professional.
I just want to make sure if we're doing an MOU with a league in the sense that it's uniform amongst all the leagues in town. That's all. But I I wholeheartedly agree with an MOA.
With with building this, like, I I've mentioned this before. The disc golf course is built nothing more than a shovel and a wheelbarrow. And it comes out just as easy as it goes in. After this two-year period, if the town, for some reason, decides it's not appropriate for there, you would never know that we were ever there. It leaves no footprint whatsoever, even during play. A lot of people are talking like there's going to be thousands of people there. I mean, we talked about the numbers at Nenegra. It was like, what, 12 people a day at a point, you know? So over here, Nenegra is a much bigger course, you know? It it would be almost a I don't actually, you know, I don't even think Nenegra is a professional disc golf course. What we're building is not a professional disc golf. We do not want the PDGA tour here. This is simply for residents and friends of residents to come down, play some disc golf, walk through the park, enjoy the park as it as it is. You know, we're not this, we're not going to put in tee pads. We're just going to do tee markers. Any grass that gets worn out on the tees, the tee can be moved four feet either direction every, say, six months to provide wear. And this is grass. It grows back. There's nothing permanent at all for this course whatsoever. As far as insurance, yes. Any tournament that you do that is regulated by PDGA or is a not professional tournament, but a tournament where you have registered players with PDGA numbers, you need to have insurance anyways. They won't let that go on without insurance. And as far as league plays, we're not PYSA. I coached for PYSA for eight years. I'm very familiar with the the league. We are not PYSA. We don't have a near amount of like a league would be a pickup league, like 10 people meeting on Wednesday night to play a game. You know, I play in a league, Tuesday nights over at the Curtis Corner Course. We have, I think it's 22 people in that league. That's a pretty big league, too. So these leagues aren't like PYSA leagues. We're not bringing 200 kids of all different ages. It's a simple pickup league where, you know, a few people get together. We register with the Parks and Recs, you know, group, whatever. Parks and Rec is going to take care of that end of it. But they register with Parks and Rec and they would, you know, pay a fee, I guess, that would be determined by Parks and Rec. We are just simply building this and giving this to the town. That is it. Nobody owns it. We don't own anything of it. The town would profit. Anything that was made from it, I don't stand to make a dime. My non-for-profit doesn't make a dime. All we do is give this to our community, for children, adults, seniors, anyone to come out and enjoy. You don't have to be fearful, looking every way, a disc flying at you. Because you you look at the numbers. Look at the numbers, what I encourage people to do. Instead of just coming up here and, look, I understand a lot of these people live around the Glen, you know, and they're concerned. But really, I encourage them. Take five minutes, go walk around a regular disc golf course. Be open-minded to this. We are planning an introduction to Disc Golf Weekend, where we're going to invite everybody from the community down. Come throw a disc, try it out. And yeah, you know, you are right. When you first start out, you might throw the disc, you know, off off kilter quite a bit. But you're only throwing the disc 20 feet. And you do not have the speeds that a young professional disc golfer does. People that can throw, I cannot throw 400 feet. I can't get the disc to do 60 miles per hour anymore. Those are younger kids in their 20s that are professional. But you know what? If you're throwing the disc that far, you also have a lot of control of said disc.
Dean, that is nine o'clock. I'm going to reel in because we're talking about the MOU.
Thank you for your support.
I just have a question. Are there any deal breakers that I've mentioned? I mean, basically, you talk a good game. We just want to want to put it on paper. I think we have, I think there's support here to have an MOA. Did you hear anything I said that stands out to you that you can't
Do the other sports have an MOA there?
What's that?
The other sports that are at the
I don't I don't know if they do or not, but I
I would like to look into that.
You could be happy that we're asking you for an MOA and we're progressing down the road.
So, yes, there are there are agreements with the other leagues to provide
How many people do we have to have before we need an MOA? How many people required?
As far as I'm concerned.
So if me and, say, my buddy go down to the Glen Park right now and we go throw discs, we need an MOA?
No.
So why is it different when the course is there?
You're establishing a league like soccer, like baseball.
It's not, that's I tried to make a point. It's not like soccer. It's not like baseball. We don't have 100 kids in a league. They said the league is a pickup of 10 to 20 people.
It doesn't matter if it's 10 or 20 people or
Yeah, I don't see a problem with, I'm just asking. I don't see a problem with getting an MOA at all. You know, I I would assume that would be with Parks and Rec, though. Like I said, we don't own it.
Not between you as a person and the town. It's an MOA between the organization, the 501(c)(3) in order to make sure everything is done properly.
Okay, I'll have to ask the lawyer who set it up. She might already have one in in set. It's not an issue at all. I don't see that as a deal breaker at all.
I have a question for you. You meant, so you already established the 501(c)(3)?
Yes, yes.
And the insurance, you do have or don't have?
It's all set up by a lawyer. If that's out of my pay grade, I'm not sure. We got all the legal paperwork.
I doubt they have insurance yet.
Yeah, right now, we're just collecting donations. You know, if there's other things we need like insurance, I don't see that as an issue at all. Right now, we're just simply collecting the donations so we can purchase the baskets. And, you know, I appreciate all the input like that. That's what I'm looking for, is like help from Parks and Rec. I actually, you know, applied for Parks and Rec, I think, four to five times now and have a good on that, just because I'd like to be on that and help help this through to these. Oh, hey, Rod, you know, you should get insurance for this. Okay, no problem. Consider that done. You know, this this is the the only support I'm looking for from the town. I'm not looking for the town's money. I'm looking for the town's support and what we have to do to make this happen.
I think, too, that, I don't know if it's part of the MOA, but I think that the Park and Rec Director should be addressing questions, not sending them to another resident in town or, you know, the assistant or something. I don't, I know I would feel the same way. I wouldn't want to, you know, have somebody and then get directed to another citizen in town that, you know, may not know the information.
We'll take that up at another time. That's that's not for this. It's not on the performance of the of staff is not on the agenda right now.
No, it's not a performance thing.
Mr. Kessin, you have a question or suggestion?
Again, Paul Kessin, 3241 East Main Road. I think I now understand the sensitivity of this piece of this topography in this area because it's very close to what's Rhode Island Nursery, just north of it, and the Boulevard Nursery. I would ask in the memorandum of disagreement that you guys are creating, that if you disagree, that erosion is happening, that you have the right to terminate this to protect the land that's owned by the people.
I don't see there being any more wearout than people who are walking there on a regular basis.
It doesn't matter. We never thought that. Help me here next to St. Boniface Church. The road that washed out.
Fairview.
Fairview Lane, whatever happened. Sir, it is a sensitive area. Go look at the retention ponds on Rhode Island Nursery's property. It's a very sensitive area. And if we we can't leave this out of the memorandum, if, in fact, we start losing land because of traffic in that in that it's where the old, the great big old barn used to be, the amphitheater. We want to stop this and not lose it to the river. We would be delinquent if we didn't stop the land from eroding. Trust me.
I don't see there to be any availability for erosion.
So there is the tributary to the Syconic that runs through Glen Park. It eroded significantly. The town altered that. I didn't see any C R M C documentation. It's a freshwater well and that was altered. And it continues to erode. And I do feel that not necessarily the erosion near the the basket holes, but I've sent Leah Hitchens' documentation during extreme precipitation events, not hurricanes, just regular sunny day, like rain events. The flooding in Glen Park has eroded the the grass area near the parking. And when you do get additional cars parking for, once again, other uses, a tournament just adds to the existing parking that's going on in the grass, it erodes the the soil. So it is leading to erosion into Syconic Bay. And it it's becoming more common with extreme weather events that the Glen Park floods. It floods regularly. Half the parking lot, you know, is is wet. You can't pull in for the summer camp because it's you'll get stuck in the mud. So to say it's not happening, it is happening right now. And you're talking about adding to events. So for the MOU, I do recommend adding hours when I think it should be excluded. I think there should be safe hours until like 10:00 AM when it can, you can go and you know that the activity will not be occurring at that time. I I spoke to people who ride horses there. And they also would like to know when they can ride their horses and not be concerned about this. And if there are certain designated times that these activities can occur, that should be part of the MOU. I do think it should also be set back from Glen Road. These discs can fly into the road and hit a car. So I do think the course, while it was looked at by a disc golf player, it wasn't looked at by an engineer, wasn't looked at by a safety standard. Flying objects into Glen Road could cause someone to veer off the road. So I I want my question was the 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 course, the latest course shows areas that are close to the road.
Goes southwest and there's one along
And this is assuming kids aren't checking this out and throwing them as they as they please. If the hole to start the thing is not near Glen Road, I think that the liability of the town would be better off. Finally, I think that the rules should be clarified. When I did write to the Director of Parks, I was asking about signage for rules, the budget to create signage that is aesthetically pleasing, is informative, as well as there's another question I had for this Director of I I'll have to follow up. But I do think the MOU should be considered at a future meeting so that oh, I know. I looked at the Parks Glen Park rental agreement. And if you rent Glen Park, you can have alcohol there. There is a stipulation that it needs to be provided by a caterer. But there's nothing to say that if they rent Glen Park, they can serve alcohol. So again, open containers in a in a family-friendly community park. There are other parks in Portsmouth. But this is one of like two that are community parks. There's lots of existing users there. And again, to see tournaments, like the rugby tournament brought in, it really does damage fields that lacrosse, which continue to play nearby, had to move off of that field for over a month. So to say that this doesn't have impacts on users, I I don't think you've been gathering the impacts that are happening.
Thank you, Ms. Dean.
Just Thomas Manning, 297 Glen Road. Just a comment for records because you did not acknowledge that you were aware of erosion. Yet on September 8th, you directed DPW to take care of the bank that was eroded. Swift action. And I do appreciate also that the signage had been updated on Glen Road. But I do want the town council member to acknowledge that they knew about erosion. There was taken care of without state approval, yet it was taken care of.
I think it was taken care of before we even knew about it. Yeah.
It was originally the plan of Glen Park that there would be no signage of sponsorship or anything to do with money at the park. Even the ball field, as long as I was there, we didn't allow the banners. It was to keep the vista wide open so everybody could see the beauty of that park. You're going to have all those signs around. You're going to have all those sand pits. You're going to have those baskets. And I don't care what you say, they are not attractive. So just keep that in mind. It's a beautiful place. Don't ruin it.
So your
President, I'd like to make a motion.
To direct the staff to make up an MOU and bring it back to the council?
Pretty much.
Okay.
I would motion for the Parks and Rec Director, working with legal, to develop an MOA with a potential disc golf 501(c)(3) organization to bring back to the town council by year's end.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those
Sorry, would the MOA be with Parks and Rec? In my understanding, okay.
It'd be with the town, but managed through the Parks and Rec.
Mr. President. So that MOA would come back to the council, I take it?
Yes, so by year's end means the first meeting in December.
Okay, so the MOA, so without an MOA, it wouldn't happen then, correct? We we can't proceed, correct? I mean, we can proceed, but it, you can't start doing any play until this MOA is developed, agreed upon, correct?
That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, that's the way I look at it. I just want to be clear, correct?
I wouldn't say we would circumvent the already-approved approval by disapproving it by some other means. We're trying to backdoor a disapproval. I think that's wrong of the council.
Yeah, well, I don't see it like that. I see it as we are putting
Putting
stipulations.
Simulations of 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 the process.
Correct.
So as long as we have the MOU, I don't see there's any reason to deny the MOU if it's agreeable to the council unless there's something really obnoxious in that agreement that we don't agree with, which I don't anticipate there would be.
But the council would have to agree to the MO
Yes.
A or MOU, right?
That is the motion.
Mr. President, I would just, just for the for the for my own good sense of this, I I think we should say that that if the council is going to approve a future MOU, then any action taken between now and whenever that approval occurs is at the risk of the Disc Golf Association. So if, for example, they buy purple baskets in November and we say they can only be green in December, they're going to have to change the color of their baskets. It's on their dime. It's at their risk. I just want to be clear that that's that's how I'm viewing this. So and that's just one example. And any of the items that are listed here, if anything alters what they think they have approval for, they will have to deal with that, you know, on their own dime and at their own time.
Understood. Any other questions for this quick agenda item?
Mine was not long.
All those in favor? I am opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, I am positive this is going to be quicker. Monthly finance report, Ms. Marsden.
Good evening, Mr. President and Honorable Counsel. As of September 30th, the town completed the first quarter 25% of fiscal year 2026. General fund revenues were at 29.85% of the budget, supported by strong tax collections, state aid and interest income, while expenditures were at 24.37%, reflecting timely quarter timely quarter pension payments. Overall revenues and expenditures are performing as expected and financial trends remain stable as we move through the second quarter. That's all.
Any questions for our finance director?
A motion to receive and place on file.
Put your button.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Still second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. New business number one, request a quorum requirement relief in order to have a meeting of the Solid Waste Recycling Committee, total number of committee membership and quorum. We have to write a new set of bylaws, basically, right?
I I can, if you'd like, I'll I'll introduce this. So the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee So the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee has been attempting to meet for a number of weeks, months. I'm not sure exactly how long, but has has been unable to because they cannot pull a quorum in. There they've got a minimum requirement for the number of members and a majority quorum requirement, and so they cannot conduct any business. They can't even technically come propose new bylaws to us because they can't get a quorum to do that. So that is a pickle, and I think the the sense of the the administration, and and I'll let the committee speak for themselves. But the sense is that you you have a couple of choices. One, you could, you know, merge the committee with some other committee with more members. You could appoint more members to this committee, but that doesn't seem to have been working. Or you can change the bylaws to have a very minimal number of board members required to hold a meeting and have a quorum. And I think that was
Or option four, we could just disband the committee because it's not really needed.
That's right. If it's if it's if it's served its purpose, that is certainly an option and and, you know, in the interest of government efficiency, that's that's certainly your prerogative.
The only reason I say that is because we have a three-year agreement with one trash situation and a five-year agreement with another trash situation. So we really don't need a solid waste recycling committee for at least another three years.
And you can always reappoint them ad hoc as as needed as those contracts come up.
Mr. Kasson.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Again, somewhere around the first of October, the first meeting, the eighth, I put in the same request, not realizing that my request to reduce the quorum required you to reduce the amount of committee. Everybody took that as a something you couldn't do. And until I met with Amanda on Tuesday of last week, she suggested that I I ask you to maybe reconstitute the committee. This committee's been standing since 2008, I guess, is when the bylaws were created. I I find an urgency that we need to leave this committee established just as an oversight. It overlooks the two businesses, enterprise businesses funds. Right now, currently, both in my estimation and my spreadsheets that nobody likes, we're we're running a deficit because we've never met the required amount of membership stickers, whatever you want to call it. And and then one of them's, both of them are pretty sizable. I mean, it's it's above what I I use as a threshold, 4% increase in a in a sticker price. I would ask that you not disband the committee. I would ask that you would leave it intact, but somehow we need to eliminate people that aren't come into the meetings. I've made almost every one of them, except for maybe one in August when I'm at camp. Cynthia Burke's been there. Jason, who's sitting here tonight, has always made it. We we have one individual as as like myself when I worked for Raytheon that I could leave the country without a passport, not tell anybody where I was going and be back when I get back. And 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 I thought that we could operate and I again found out that we couldn't, that I could not operate even though I had what I what I looked at as an excused absence. But again, since April, when I've been put on this committee, it's been since April that I know of that the committee has not been able to even elect a chair.
How many?
We typically have
Relatively active, because they're not all active, but how many relatively active people do we have?
We have two people that that I believe have excused absences. I'm not into
How many people are typically show up at a meeting? Because I think
Four.
The qual, the quorum is pretty high, right? Quorum's like six or seven?
The quorum is six or seven and 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 I do not want to lose some of the people because they retain all the knowledge in as in the minutes.
So if we were to put this on the next agenda as a redo of the bylaws and knock it down to seven people, membership, which would be
You can do it. You can do it differently by changing the the quantity of people without changing the bylaws. Because the bylaws doesn't mention anything about the quorum. You you tonight could in fact say that this committee will now exist of seven people. And somehow we would have to receive resignations from people that aren't showing up. And oh, by the way, Jen, who took an action at my last agenda request, sent an email out to 11 people? And I think only two responded.
I I would think that the best way forward, if you were going to reconstitute the committee, would be to reconstitute the committee. And so have a vote that says that the bylaws requirement is now based on a committee membership of X, seven.
Right.
And here are the seven people that are appointed to the
But we should do that at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think you're gonna want to post who you're going to going to appoint.
And potentially unappoint.
Well,
Reappoint everybody who's there.
You're 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 you're, you know, the entire membership is gone and now these seven people are the new membership, even though some of them are being replaced.
Do we open it up for new members to apply now? Is that what you're looking for?
It's been open.
The the bylaws themselves don't state a membership other than half of the membership of the the stated membership. The the council states that the council, that the committee shall be 11 people. The bylaws just say it has to be half. There's nothing to change in the bylaws.
The the, okay, but I I think, I mean, that surprises me. I think the bylaws should reflect whatever the council council put in as the number.
We'll fix that. We'll disband the the committee for five minutes. Reappoint seven people.
Do I have to reapply?
Yes.
All right, use the same email?
You have to come back, at least stand in front of us and ask us for permission. No, just kidding. We could do that at our next meeting.
May I say something?
Five minutes, go up and down and sideways.
So so everybody's on it, it's not gonna be a member?
Well, you said there's a couple of people who don't show up, so we'll just deselect everybody and then select the folks to get
So I have a couple more legal questions. Is there an excused absence that can be accepted?
Most bylaws are three meetings or or four meetings in a row missed, you can
Well, when you work for the military, some days you don't get back that quick.
No, so so typically the bylaw bylaws will not have a, I I I don't have those bylaws in front of me, but I I don't typically see an excused absence provision. You you either have a quorum or you don't. The reasoning doesn't matter.
Right.
Okay, then secondly, to to your point, or to the president's point, typically bylaws will have a provision that say, you know, failure to appear at, you know, three of the last four meetings is is a an excuse for removal. But in order to remove somebody, you have to have a president and a quorum and be able to vote, so we
Well, you at least have to have one person.
Well, we can't, not even, you have to have a quorum, so you you can't remove somebody until you get a valid meeting, so they're they're in an impossible position.
Right. And even to remove somebody, you have to request it of the council.
Right, typically a a chair would come to you
Right.
And say, I want Keith Hamilton removed from this committee.
You and me both.
For non attendance. You know what I mean? And we can't even get, we can't even get that far.
Well, and and given the circumstances, I I might suggest that the 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 committee, as it were, or 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 any interested members of the committee, now that they're publicly aware of this, you know, email their desire to stay on the committee or perhaps the, you know, one member can can indicate that to the the town.
So we should ask the clerk, sorry, Mandy, to send an email to all members.
We've already done that.
I know.
Excuse me.
And I've done that.
There's an official action of the council to say the council
Before we get into any official decisions that we all agree on, I just want to throw up what the only copy that I made of the the bylaws. Actually, I was on this committee in 2008 and it says in the bylaws it'll be up to 11 members. And then the quorum is a simple majority of the membership at the given time. So if you got 10, you need six, whatever it may be. But Article nine of the amendments says the Town Council may modify these bylaws at any time by a majority vote of the council. So we as a council could say, let's just temporarily reduce the membership to X number of members, six people, and the majority is four. I mean, could you get four people together for a meeting?
We could get, we could get four together and that's why I included the the bylaws in my in my backup along with the letter from the seventh, which I didn't have, three letters, three three signatures of people on the committee that that realized that we needed to pull a special meeting. It's always been on a Wednesday. It turns out like Wednesday's not working. So I have also authored an email requesting everybody's availability. I don't know whether they'll respond. Jen did the same thing. Somewhere around October 8th, I've just done it in the last two days. Maybe, maybe even less than that. And and say, before before we get, you know, and also I put this letter in front of the the council to reconsider the the quorum. I'm trying to move this forward, not being president.
I understand. We're gonna move it forward. But I think we have to do it at the next meeting to do it safely within the confines of the agenda items written.
Yeah, and I I don't think Mr. Gleason's wrong. I think I think if if there were already less than 11 members, so if the council had only appointed seven, we could say that that is now the new size because you're not deposing anybody from their seat. But I think, you know, because I I assume, and tell me if I'm wrong, that there are a full slate of appointees.
I haven't seen everybody and I don't know if we're only 10.
There's eight.
There's eight. There's eight.
Yeah.
So I, you could reduce it to eight tonight, not that that is ideal, but
But if there's only four.
That would get us, that would get us the four we need to be able to
That's not a majority. You would need five.
All right, so I'm bad at math. I'm just trying to move this thing forward.
It's because those spreadsheets are too small.
They're accurate.
Mr. Solicitor, I I just go back to the way it's written. It just requests quorum requirement relief in order to have a meeting. We're just trying to get them to a meeting so they can, you know, elect a president. Secret, they get to get Secretary of State's code so they can put it online. You know, if they had four members that were authorized to do that, then they could get off the bubble, you know?
We've been sitting on this bubble for six months and the only one who's got his head above water realizing that's what's going on is
So two weeks isn't gonna make a huge difference if we just write the agenda item properly to say we're gonna reconstitute.
A 20% increase in curbside pickup is quite a bit. If there's not a solution discussed.
I don't know if the committee's gonna fix that, but they are there for education purposes, that's for sure, for increasing recycling rates, et cetera.
Maybe it's bigger, maybe it's bigger than what I just said.
I I I would like it on the next agenda, but I I have one question, whether or not the scope of the you know, if you change the membership and things have changed a great deal in terms of solid waste in our town, do you change the charge of the committee as well?
Well,
I think we allow them to change their bylaws. We just fix the quorum.
Yep, okay.
Well, here's what, here's the problem with all of that. The last charge we had was in 2008. And we would change, I would say, we get a quorum, elect elect offices, change the bylaws, and we have to come back for you for approval. So if we pick a direction different than what the seven of you is want, then in fact, that would then become our new direction.
And that would be part of bylaw discussions.
Correct, we would have a bylaw discussion.
Right. First step, it's next meeting. Change the quorum size. Get everybody appointed.
But I asked for that.
Hopefully you have a quorum.
I asked for that.
But I don't think it's written in quite the way that we need to to do it because we're gonna change the bylaws. And we need to alert all eight people that they're gonna be kicked off the committee and then reappointed. Would you like to be one of those people reappointed?
Well, that could, that could come out of this meeting tonight.
That is going to come out of this meeting tonight, but the change of the bylaws was gonna happen at the next meeting.
We we could reduce it, you could reduce it to eight tonight and also make the request, but I still don't think
I just want to say that I've got, I've got this email floating. I mean, I know it went from Jen.
I understand that. I I understand.
She's trying to get fixed.
But even if we knew, knocked it down to the eight people who were there, you don't have a quorum unless five people show up.
Yep.
So I think we fixed the quorum responsibilities in the bylaws. Unappoint, reappoint, whoever responds.
But we have to advertise for that, or or are you gonna allow an exception? No.
We don't have to advertise for the unappointment, reappointment. We have to, we can advertise and we all, we have been advertising for people to sign up and nobody has, so.
And and Mandy, is that advertisement ongoing? Those are those, yeah, so.
Most of the people that are, most of those eight have been appointed since February of this year. I think only one is from 2020. Everybody else is from this year.
So.
It's it's not though good to have eight, right? We should have seven, right? Okay.
Right, but the problem with eight is that we need, they need four and they only have, they need five and they only have
They need five. Now it hurt us. We gotta get down to seven.
Seven is, odd numbers are better, especially for voting wise.
I always say don't have any more children than you have arms. I've only got two.
Only had two. I'm right there with you, Paul. Only come in two flavors. I got one of each. So.
Motion to continue to the next meeting.
For reconsideration of the
I don't have to craft a generator, right?
And we'll we'll word that properly, Mr. Solicitor, correct? Thank you.
The reconstitution didn't work.
Contact each to let them know they're gonna be thank you, unappointed then reappointed if they would like to still be involved. All those in favor? Aye. Close. Motion passes seven to zero. New business number three, discussion and action regarding proposal, oops, sorry. Number two, discussion and action to proceed with the plan to develop the two sports fields at 3S property. Mr. Gleason.
Okay, thank you very much. Unlike disc golf that came to fruition here within a year or so, this is kick kicks back to 2007. And hopefully in my lifetime, I'll see a soccer field out there on the 3S property. This summer, we started talking, I started talking with the with the DPDO and DPW through Mr. Rayner about trying to get this plan to fruition. Everything that could have gone wrong, I think did. I mean, we still had somebody that planted corn that wasn't supposed to, and we couldn't do anything till the end of August, so they still haven't harvested that corn. It's still out there sitting in the field.
It's very brown.
It's brown. But the bottom line is, I I think Mr. Rayner has put his foot forward to try and proceed with this, but the DPW can't do it alone. I I was hoping there was some, that they could help us with this project and I and I believe they will, but there is some some money that would need to be spent and I I think Mr. Rayner has an idea for that and I'd like to put the, let him have the floor, if I may.
Sure, we looked into this. So the issue that we're having, the corn will get harvested, that's fine. We have notified Escobar not to plant in that field anymore. But there is a five-foot grade difference in the lay of this land, the topography. That's an incredible amount of soil that will have to be graded and moved. In addition, we're talking about proper irrigation, obviously the Lomond seed. And then there are other things that we're supposed to be doing in accordance with the memorandum or the conservation agreement that we have with Krennic-Lantraff. So without belaboring it, we've been here late, it's about $90,000 to do one field. That does not include the irrigation that the Soccer League would like to be installed. That does not include the parking area and does not include the rest areas. We think that if we're gonna do this, it's proper to do this once and do it right. Let us proceed with this plan and we could use, my suggestion is that we would use funds from the amount of money deposited into the town special revenue account from South Coast Wind. There's $500,000 there. Allow us to present a plan to the council with updated costing to execute this project once and for all correctly and get your approval perhaps even the next meeting.
Okay, but the the main issue we have at this point, we obviously we can't plant seed now. So this is a spring project or potentially even next fall when it's a better planting time.
The agreement that we have with the farmer is that once the, once the corn is harvested, normally they leave little stalks on the ground. They're gonna get it down as low as possible, which will give us a head start. But this project, if approved, would go and start in earnest in September, I'm sorry, in spring. Keep in mind that once the seed is planted, the Lomond seed is planted, it's 18 months, three growing seasons, two a year, that would have to happen before it's proper to play on, otherwise we're gonna tear up all the seed and just keep doing it over again.
My concern is that if we don't have the proper watering of it, if we do a spring cycle, that we have a lot of dead grass in the summertime and then we're gonna have to reseed anyways in the fall, which we we should plan on reseeding again in the fall anyways, a slice of seed.
Well, you you do, you you, we will reseed it. Now, keep in mind that the Soccer League has Now keep in mind that the soccer league has, they've made the request that we consider irrigation and they have stated to our recreation department that, and DPW, that they will raise the funds for irrigation. So perhaps this could be done on a reimbursement so that we're not waiting for the funds to come in before we put in irrigation. Like I say, I would hate to put in all the fields, then they raise the money three years later and we're digging it up to put irrigation.
I would also hate, hate to do it. Excuse my French, half-assed.
You, you just don't like thunder. That's what I'm trying to ask you guys.
So, we, we obviously have a water line there. There's a fire hydrant right out front. We'd have to figure out a metering system and all that fun stuff for the irrigation and that's not gonna be anywhere close to the ninety thousand dollars for irrigation and, and setting up the field.
Correct. That's why I'm asking. As the ninety thousand dollars was for one field, grade it, plant, you know, loam and seed it. That's it, right? But why would we do that? We have the land to put up to two, possibly even three fields there. The conservation easement that we have with ALT, there's a lot of stipulations there. We're supposed to provide parking that has a pervious surface that's not viewable from the street. We're supposed to plant arborvitae. It even dictates exactly what the siding has to look like on the restroom. So let's if, let us present a plan to you that is the whole enchilada so that you know exactly what it's gonna cost for us to do this right, how much we can take on ourselves and, and get this project started in the spring. We, we have the money to do it. It's not allocated for anything else. And I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, this, this project has been sitting out there in the ether for more than a decade. And you heard plenty of reasons tonight why we should be looking for recreation opportunities outside of the Glen, so.
Does the MOU specifically state that we have to have the restrooms done at the same time or are we gonna do that in the future?
No.
Okay, so we can get it done.
As an add-in.
Okay.
You know, whoever, whoever's gonna help us build this, it would be an add-on part of the RFP, which we may execute or not.
And a pervious surface no longer includes millings.
Well, believe it or not, it doesn't include gravel either, so I'm not sure what pervious means anymore to the.
It, I would venture to guess you might wanna talk to a couple of Quahoggers.
I just have a quick question. Are there any grants available for helping us with this? Is it sports related?
Correct.
Some D E M grants out there.
Next month you will receive the list of potential D E M grant, outdoor recreation grant applications, which you will be required to prioritize and that will be one of the ones that we prevent to. But there's no guarantee. We have, we haven't received one of these grants in quite a while and typically when they come, they're, they're very low.
Yeah.
Amount.
Well, it depends. I mean, I know Narragansett got five hundred thousand dollars to put in this turf field at the high school. But.
To high school. A whole different ballgame.
But, yes and no. I, I know we lost out on pickleball because we didn't put pickleball on our grant four years ago. But we can't put pickleball in three, three S properties because that's.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, I mean, we would move forward the project. We would apply for the grants. The grants would come in and then we would go ahead and deduct that from the amount of money the town is spending.
Spare?
Uh, Mr. Rayner, how much would you estimate in ballpark, that's the laid out, uh, how much the engineering work would estimate? I know you said that bear, you took on ninety-five.
This would probably be at least, I'm gonna guess Paul's gonna correct me if I'm wrong, at least a quarter million dollars and this is not including the, that would include the irrigation, I believe, but not include the restroom facilities.
Okay, thank you.
And keep in mind, I mean, we built the Sandy Point Beach House. This was a number of years ago now and that was quarter million dollars back then, so.
I mean, you look sixty grand for a septic.
Yeah.
So.
Everything costs money. Mr. President, just a couple of things. I believe there was, there may be some potential, some Mrs. Van Buren money in there as well, as far as grants go.
So, obviously we've been going full bore on this since it was initially brought up. We're talking to a number of folks, including the Van Buren Foundation. Van Buren Foundation is absolutely interested in talking to us about recreational space. They call it, you know, the development of the town commons is their term that they're using. But they don't wanna approach it as just a singular project. They would be looking to piggyback that on a more holistic view of recreation. So there may be money there. There may not be. We're working on it now and hopefully we can get that to you by the end of the year.
Does that mean something other than soccer, soccer here, whatever, track?
Well, no, it means, you know, soccer there at the three S fields and possibly, you know, playground or the development of, one of the things that we talked about is they're interested in helping us develop an articulate master plan for the review, assessment and revitalization of town playgrounds. Instead of, you know, just picking one and doing one, you know, what is the need? What does the population deserve in that neighborhood or require in that neighborhood? How many kids live there, so on and so forth? So they would be interested in helping us develop that capital plan for our playground. So my thought process after meeting with them last week was to piggyback the three S field on with that requirement and see you know, in my discussions with them, if that's something that they think would entice their board into giving us some money.
Okay. And, and lastly, I know in the conversations I've had with yourself or, or Mr. Roderick, there was a potential of the, of the farmers after harvesting of doing a better job. In other words, they normally just leave a six-inch stub right there, but my point is that the, you know, if we can authorize them to do that, but not have to do a hundred percent of the property because we're not looking at the whole field per se, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. They've already agreed to do that. So they, they contract people to come in and harvest this.
Right.
And so they've, normally they leave this stock, they're gonna do the best they can to get it down as low as they can. I don't know how much they'll be able to plow under, but it will be in better condition than they've left it in the past because they're not gonna be growing there anymore.
Right.
I can, if you just ask my, talk to Dave about this, when, they can harvest onto a point. But what they really need is I've, you're getting, I've got a bog harrow and it'll, it churns up the first four inches and just makes everything into paste. And then everything will decay, all the roots, because the corn roots are pretty, they're like small trees. And that way they'll go away over the winter. Be a lot easier to pick up.
I imagine that's probably what they propose.
Well, I mean, you might have to ask him because that would have to be part of.
I forward all your information to Mr. Roderick. He's well aware of that. I'm sure he has a plan.
He's got a bog harrow?
When we were there last time doing the walkthrough, they're, they're very short stubs, about three inch. And they come right up. They're not well-rooted at all. But they agreed to plow it all under and get rid of those four inch. But the, the problem is it is still a five-foot slope, so no matter what you do there, it's gonna be filled over by many feet.
Yeah. Lot of earth, earth moving to happen.
Correct.
And drainage and other things, so we're not playing on mud. Which it is very muddy in the back there.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're gonna come back to us with a developed plan and some pricing?
Correct.
That good?
Sure. Sounds good to me.
Okay.
For everybody else.
New business number three, discussion and action regarding proposed lease from the town and the senior center, Mr. Rayner. We have a lease that is essentially a regurgitation of the old lease. The only things that I found.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I need to recuse myself.
Okay. You already filled the paper? All right. The clerk, I think the clerk has one or you have one in the apartment. Manny, you have one?
Yeah.
There's usually one of the, there we go. All right.
If he's doing that, I'll be happy to just kinda give you a rundown of where we're at.
Yeah, I just, the, the two things that I saw was the date of January first being moved up to November tenth, when the move-in date would be. And then the the term. Because we changed our charter to avoid the death by a thousand paper cuts as was used during the time that we can, we cannot lease or sublet anything out for more than ten years, nor can we sell any piece of property over two acres or any piece of a property containing more than two acres.
Correct.
So we can't cut off a half an acre at a time and destroy a whole property.
So I, I, I think I'll address that in my notes here.
All right.
Allow me. So just for background context, bring everybody up to speed. Obviously, the Portsmouth Senior Center is a private nonprofit organization. It's obviously existed for decades, serving our local seniors. It currently operates in a section of the Anne Hutchinson Building, which sits on town-owned land. That space they operate in is scheduled for demolition next month to make way for the new Adi Bethune House and the fire code necessities to allow a fire loop around the Adi Bethune House. The Adi Bethune House is a fifty-four unit affordable senior housing project. That's the primary purpose of that project, developed by Church Community Housing Corporation. As part of that project, the town negotiated dedicated space for a new senior center within that Adi Bethune House building. So the proposed lease agreement between the town, the lease or, and Portsmouth Multipurpose Senior Center, as Lee C., that formalizes the senior center's use of the new space. It is essentially identical to the lease that they've had with the town for decades, just updated to reflect the new location. The term, it was in there as twenty years, should be ten, acknowledged. And the renewal option should also be ten vice twenty years, not to exceed ninety-nine years, because the ground lease exists for ninety-nine years. Therefore, the lease extension should not go beyond ninety-nine years. The rent is one dollar per year. That's purely a symbolic amount. The purpose is to provide, is, is for the senior center to operate a center providing services, programs, and social opportunities for older residents, exactly as they are doing currently. So the key provisions of the lease, you know, use supremacist. The center may host programs, educational sessions, and civic or charitable meetings consistent with their mission, as they have done since, for at least thirty years. Regarding utilities and maintenance, the senior center is responsible for its interior upkeep, upkeep, cleaning, and minor repairs under one thousand dollars. The town will remain responsible for major maintenance, that's one thousand dollars and above. With regard to insurance, the center must maintain liability insurance of at least one million dollars, just as required under the current lease. With regard to termination, we wrote in there that either party may terminate with one year's written notice. If the town terminates, it must make a good faith effort to relocate the center to another town building. So why this lease matters? It ensures the continuity of senior services for Portsmouth after the old building is demolished. It reaffirms the town's longstanding partnership with the nonprofit senior center organization. And this arrangement keeps the senior center on town-leased property so that they can operate a senior center, this is a not-private nonprofit, at minimal cost, allowing them to focus resources on programs rather than facilities. The terms have already been reviewed by the town solicitor and consistent with best practice. So, the proposed lease is essentially identical to the one the town has had with the senior center for decades. It's simply updated to reflect the new location, the new building owner, and current legal standards. Unfortunately, the senior center board declined to approve the lease at their last meeting on Thursday. I'd like to briefly summarize the issues communicated to me and clarify each point to the council. First, regarding the start date. Yep, you're right. That start date in the draft lease was written as January first, twenty twenty-six. That was a placeholder. When we were drafting all this, we had no idea when they would be able to move in. We knew it would be sometime, you know, at that time, you know, winter, possibly even early spring. So of course it will be updated to the, the date that we now know, which is November tenth, twenty twenty-five, to coincide with their expected move-in date. Second, liability insurance. The senior center has carried the same insurance requirement since nineteen ninety-four. It's nothing new. They already have a certificate of insurance on file. The only addition is a standard indemnification clause, or what is commonly called a home harmless provision. And that has been recommended by our insurer, which ensures both the town and the senior center, to protect both parties by ensuring that responsibility lies with whichever party causes a loss or a claim. Third, parking. The Adi Bethune House site plan, which was approved by the planning board, provides eighty parking spaces, eleven of which are handicap accessible, and all others are unassigned and available for general use. Both Church Community Housing and the planning board concluded that this capacity exceeds the combined needs of the senior center and the fifty-four unit senior housing development. They have also, in the ground lease, this can be opened back up. So what we propose is that we, we pulse this again after a year and see if the parking's working out. If assigned parking is needed, Church Community and Town will work out a plan. Fourth, a services agreement. The senior center already has an executed services agreement via an MOU with Church Community Housing, committing to provide programs and services to both their members and residents of the Adi Bethune House. This was signed in January of twenty twenty-three. If they wish to expand or formalize that agreement further, that can certainly be done. But that's a separate matter and should, it should not hold up the lease process. Fifth, maintenance responsibilities. The proposed lease clearly defines maintenance duties. The senior center handles routine interior upkeep and minor repairs under one thousand dollars. The town remains responsible for major maintenance, things over one thousand dollars. This mirrors the arrange, the arrangement that's been in existence for decades. And then finally, the question of cost. There's been some, there's been some misunderstanding that the town has spent well over a million dollars for the new senior center space. This unfortunately is incorrect. The town has not paid any funds toward construction or for the senior center. Church Community Housing financed the project through its own affordable housing funding sources. The town will pay one dollar per year to lease the senior center space and Church Community will pay one dollar per year to the town for a ground lease of town property. When completed, the fifty-four affordable housing units will be placed on the tax roll. So not only are we getting a senior center, but we're getting units that are going to be added to the tax roll and we will receive tax revenue. So in summary, the proposed lease maintains the same relationship the town and the senior center have had for years. Same rent, same responsibilities, just in a new building. I've been invited to a meeting of the senior center board this Thursday. I recommend that the council approve the lease as presented with the updated start date of November tenth, twenty twenty-five. Any other changes discussed and changes that you desire. And allow me to present this to the senior center board for their approval at their next meeting next Thursday.
Mr. Reese?
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Rayner, has the town taken legal possession of the property to be leased? I mean, is, is, do we maintain a legal owner?
We signed a ground lease with Church Community, which gives us that senior center apartments. We will take possession of it when the certificate of occupancy has been signed.
That was the next question I was gonna ask. If you don't, when do you expect to get the certificate of occupancy? Because that's, that's your safety and fire alarms, because I've, I've had to do these, mechanicals, electrical, structural. All have to get signed up before anybody can move in. And I just don't want the seniors to be in limbo somewhere because that has to happen, I would think, before they would sign this. So I wouldn't even recommend them sign it until you have those documents, you know, inked and signed, because that's.
That's all expected to be done by the end of this month.
After the meeting and after the move.
Hard, well, there is a hard move-out date, November tenth. A moving date, November tenth. That space needs to be cleared by November fourteenth, otherwise there is. Pardon?
Where are the seniors going? They can't go in there without a certificate of occupancy.
They're already, they're already packing up and closing down.
So there, there be no senior center for how many weeks?
I would look at it another way, right? We're moving them into a new space and they're going to have a brand-new senior space for ninety-nine years. Right?
When? That's the only thing. I mean, when?
Well, November tenth, they're moving in.
They can't without a certificate of occupancy.
This is all gonna be, not before November tenth, they have.
Fire alarms and safety, you can't.
I think, I think there was confusion from what, what Mr. Rayner said. When he said this month, he meant this month, October. So the, the CO should be done well in advance of the tenth.
Oh, okay. So it'll be in, done in, all right, that you didn't explain, in advance of.
In advance of the tenth.
Of the demolition.
So the goal would be it, the CO is done by the seventh.
Okay.
I know this weekend they put the portion.
Okay. I just didn't wanna leave them hanging.
They've been hanging for six years now. Miss McDowell?
Not in the parking lot.
Yeah, I, I was asked to attend the senior citizens' meeting last week and I had never been to a meeting. I was asked by a citizen because a lease was coming up, so I wanted to understand what, what the concerns were, et cetera. And I, my, my. And my feeling was at that meeting that, I mean, my gut feeling was that I don't think they're going to have, or they have any... They had those questions, and you addressed them, and it was addressed. Several questions were addressed at the meeting. But I think the most important thing that I got from that meeting was, again, the process. It sounded like they received the lease, a red-line copy of the lease, which red-line means to me changes were made, and people get nervous like that. They get nervous. And so, they got that the night before. They're asked to sign it in a haste, and they had questions. And I believe a lot of the questions, it was a great presentation, were answered, however. So, I don't think there's going to be a problem with the lease. I think that all they're asking is that could they have their lawyer, or if they have a lawyer, or a lawyer, look at it, because it is a new situation. I see that as a very reasonable thing. Unfortunately, what's unreasonable, I think, is that it was done so hastily, asking them to sign that, I think. And that's when people got concerned, people got upset. So, again, the process interfered with the result. And, I mean, I personally think if I was a member of the board, the senior citizens' board was given a lease, even though it kind of mimics the last lease, it is a new situation, that I would want a lawyer just take a look at it to give his or her blessing. And I didn't think that was unreasonable. So, I know we're under constraints right now, but can't we give them, like, a little, just a little time?
I couldn't agree with you more. This is why I sent their board of directors a memo outlining the provisions of the new lease, a copy of the draft lease, on 15 September.
So, it's been since the middle of September they've had this?
They responded and sent a list of questions, which we answered and sent back to them. That was the basis for the red-line lease. So, the changes were the changes that they wanted. The only significant change, or addition, rather, was the addition of the indemnification clause, which the director and the board, I'm sure, was completely aware of. I mean, it's their insurance, which I had a copy of. So, while I agree with you wholeheartedly, they did have time to look at this. I mean, I know that there are senior board members here that can speak to that better than I can. I'm not a member of the board in the town department, so they have their own processes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Ferber?
Yes, excuse me. Fred Ferber, 271 Sprague Street. I'm a member, I'm actually the treasurer of the board, but relatively new, because I was elected in, whatever it was, June, I think. And I volunteered to run because I wanted to help make sure that this was a smooth transition. But everything that Mr. Rayner said is precisely accurate. We all had copies of a preliminary lease, which then was red-lined, I think, by our solicitor, but I'm not sure. And along with that, when the red-line was sent to us, we were sent a clean copy as well. So, we got both copies at the same time. Apparently, some people think they didn't. So, in our last meeting, there was some confusion as to whether, you know, they had received it or not. But in the discussion, the last meeting, the vote was 6 to 3. Only three of us voted in favor of signing the lease. But the issues that bothered people were so picky, it was just, you know, ridiculous, I thought. One of them was the date, you know, which clearly was just a placeholder. But maybe the biggest issue was represented by one person who convinced five or six others to consider it a problem, which was the one-year termination clause. They wanted to change it to six months. So, we had our members meeting today, and just for fun, we asked for a straw vote from the members after they listened to the discussion of all of this. And overwhelmingly, almost unanimously, the membership voted in favor of retaining the one-year termination clause. So, I really think we've pretty much got this buttoned up. But unfortunately, we just couldn't get enough people to vote in favor of this. So, we're having the meeting on Thursday, as you said. And one of the issues early on was they disliked the fact that only Christian Velden, the CCH representative, was present at the last meeting, when they thought that you should have been there as well, so they could ask questions as to what the town's responsibility was, as well as Church Community Housing. The rest of the things, I think you covered pretty well. Parking spaces, there's, they'll see how it goes with parking. But in the construction of the adjacent building, if necessary, they can provide some additional parking there. And I understand the town owns land behind the building, which, if necessary, could also include some parking. But there's more parking in this new project than the senior center had before. All the parking's unassigned. It's not assigned for the residents, and it's not assigned for us. So...
The biggest issue with parking will be the initial couple of weeks to take down the old building and create that new parking.
Right.
So, it will be tight.
And the study was done, the reason for the parking allocation was the result of a study of a number of complexes that I guess CCH either owns or runs or included in their study. And we're actually, or they are actually allocating more parking than the study warranted, even with just 72 spaces. But they added eight, and I think you said there's 11 handicap spaces.
11 handicap, and there were actually two studies. It was one done by Church Community, and there was one done by Beta Engineering. The Church Community actually allocated more spaces than the engineering study. Church Community based it on properties that they already own and aerial photographs of the senior center while it's been in use, including when the baseball field is being used. So, they allocated more spaces for parking than what either study had dictated.
Right. And we are moving in the 10th of November. And I haven't had a chance to read it carefully, but I think you received a letter today, I believe, or an email today from Christian Velden, saying that we have to vacate the premises by the 15th, because they plan on demolishing the building. So, we've got to get out of there ASAP, so we don't have a lot of time to waste. And the issue of whether or not we should have our own attorney evaluate that. To me, this seems like a pretty simple, common lease. I don't see any significant issues in this lease. And I think you said this is practically identical to the previous leases that we've had with one or two minor changes, which you addressed. I think that's all I have to say. Anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Ferber.
Yep.
Can I just clarify one of the things Mr. Ferber said? You said we're moving in on the 10th, we're moving out on the 10th.
Oh, yeah, certificate of occupancy, as you said.
It's the 15th.
You can't legally, you can't move into a building without a certificate of occupancy, so it ought to be, you know, evident that that'll be the case. But they told us a few weeks ago that the 10th was gonna be the date of the move with the conclusion on the 15th. And additionally, they're helping us with the move. They're moving all of the large items, actually, they're moving everything that we can pack. And so, that's saving us thousands of dollars, you know, just from that fact alone. It's technically being brothers, it's moving us.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sevigny?
Thanks, Mr. President. Counsel? You know, the most surprising thing to me in this experience over the last couple of months is that somehow the circumstance migrated from being just a slam dunk and a good deal for everybody into this really adversarial thing, where we're talking about lawyers, okay? I mean, we're part of the town. The town's lawyer went through this line by line, okay? And the timeline was, everybody on the senior center board had a copy of the draft lease that Mr. Rayner had put together back in September, okay? Everybody had that for a month, okay? So, it's not like people were just handed a brand-new thing to look at. All they, what we had, you know, what we got the day before our meeting was the updates to that draft lease. And I had asked Mr. Rayner, please provide a red-line copy of those updates, so the board could see what the changes were from the lease that they received September 15th. That's it, okay? And we're talking about a five or six-page thing. This was not, this was not a huge hurdle, at least in my view. That's my own opinion. The need for a lawyer, I'd sure like to explain why the senior center should, you know, spend some of its precious funds that ought to go to programs on a lawyer to check on our lawyer, the town's lawyer. I mean, is there some concern out there that the town is somehow working at odds for the best interests of our senior center? I don't think so. So, please, somebody explain to me the value proposition for hiring a lawyer to look at what the town solicitor and the town administrator have been working on for months. I should say for 30 years. It's the same lease. There is one significant change, and that's that hold harmless clause. And all that means is if somebody in Church Community Housing screws something up and gets sued, the town's held harmless, and the senior center is held harmless, and they have to be accountable for their own problems. And that's how it goes around. And your solicitor, if I got that wrong, please correct me. That's the change. That's the one additional clause that's in that lease. All the others are pretty much the same. They've been wordsmithed, and some of the language from 30 years ago has been updated. You know, one of the paragraphs got changed from dangerous materials to compliance with environmental laws and hazardous materials and all that. But that's it, okay? We're getting a new senior center for free. And the important thing with November 10th is we've got to move our stuff out so they can bulldoze the building, okay? So, where are we gonna put it? We gonna leave it in the parking lot while we hammer out a lease? Church Community Housing is not gonna let the town or the senior center move all our stuff into that building if we don't have a lease, okay? And the rest of it gets worked out with certificates of occupancy and fire alarms and all that other stuff. It's gonna be a little while for the town center, for the town, for the senior center to actually move in and start operating. Because the other, on the other side of this coin is, once all that stuff leaves the senior center, and if you've been there, you know, there is a lot of stuff to deal with. Take a walk through the thrift shop if you think I'm kidding you, okay? Well, once that stuff gets over there, the place has to get organized. We've got to set up the furniture, okay? There's electronics and other stuff that have to be set up, and there's a lot of coordination. It's gonna go on with the Bayhand people and CCH. So, it is gonna be a little while before there is an operating senior center. So, my recommendation to the council is, it's your lease. You're the Leasor. We're the Leasie, okay? Sign the lease. Have Mr. Rayner bring it over. He can go through all the Q and A face-to-face with the board when we convene on Thursday. You're all invited to come as well. It's been a pretty open process. As some of you have seen, it's been a pretty... It's been a very open process. Let me just put it that way, okay? Everyone has an opinion. Everyone has their own concern and all that. But I think we need to get past that and get this lease done. I mean, it is a good lease. It is in the interest of the senior center. I think it's in the interest of the town. I'm not quite understanding the problem, other than there is a desire on a part of the senior center board to have a face-to-face Q and A negotiation, maybe, with the town administrator. We thought we'd handle that with the written Q and A, so we'd have a good record. It would be transparent, and it would be a record of, here's our question, here's the answer. But that didn't seem to be enough. So, if Mr. Rayner comes over on Thursday with a lease that the council has indicated support of by signing off on it, it's my fervent hope that that will carry the day. We can get the lease signed, okay? We'll get our stuff out of the building, and the bulldozers can show up so that they can put the fire access road there, which is gonna happen anyway, no matter what we do. I mean, part of the harsh reality here is our stuff either comes out of Anne Hutchinson and goes into the new building, or it goes into storage or whatever. I don't know. All that's unknown. But I urge you, sign the lease, and let's get a move on. Any questions?
You could leave it in the building, and it would disappear. I don't think you want that.
Probably not.
No.
Although some of the thrift shop stuff, some of the thrift shop stuff, you know, maybe.
I'm hopeful that maybe you can leave the books, and we can maybe do a book sale or something.
The books are already packed.
They're already packed, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
I hope they don't pack.
By the way, the senior center staff, they've already started packing stuff up. And sometime tomorrow or the next day, they'll make a deal with Champion Movers or somebody else to come in and pack up everything else, because the Bayhand people very generously said, hey, we'll provide all the manpower you need to get the stuff out of your building and into the new building. The question is, well, you know, where will they actually put it? So, you know, I think we can, I think we can get past this. I mean, some of it is just misunderstanding, perceived concerns that maybe the town's done something that the senior center might not like. I mean, as Fred mentioned, and I'm not gonna belabor this anymore, the one concern that did come up in some of the discussions amongst the board was that the termination clause states each party will give the other party a year's notice if they want to back out of the lease. And there was, there was a, there was an idea voiced that maybe that should only be six months. I couldn't understand that. I mean, just purely from a senior center perspective, if you guys want to pull the rug out from under the senior center and do something different with that building, I really would like a year's notice.
What is the thought process around the other way? If you have six months, and you tell us, hey, we're out of here in six months, you're only to pay us 50 cents instead of a dollar? We're not talking about money here.
That's a great question. I have absolutely no clue what that answer would be. You know, maybe Dave or, you know, maybe Dave or somebody else.
This will solve that whole situation.
It's...
That clause was written that way because we wanted to do everything.
You take that for Thursday, and tell them I'll pay for the first 10 years. I know you were, Fred, the treasurer.
I mean, that clause is...
It's for their protection.
I know.
Yeah. It stood the test of time for, I don't know, 35 years?
I know. But I don't see why it would be an issue from the board's side.
I urge you guys to sign the lease. Let Mr. Rayner come over. He can explain it to the board. And we'll get this ironed out, and we'll get the board to authorize Rita, Rita St. Lauren, our chair, to sign right underneath your name. And we'll be done with this, so we can get on with it and actually get to the real action that has to start taking place.
I had a question and answer referred to that have been provided to really Christian Velden and yourself. Charlene recused herself, so I don't think she can respond to this. I'm pretty certain no more than four people submitted questions, because I know I submitted most of them. And the questions became problematic in themselves, because it just caused unintended dialogue. It was just intended to be used by you and Christian, at least on my part, to answer some curious things that I had in mind. So, that was done. But Rita, our chairperson, had asked us to do that in anticipation of both you and Christian showing up at the next board meeting, or whatever meeting that we had. So, Christian was there, and the questions had already been responded to, but it just generated more discussion. The other thing is, in the lease agreement itself, some people took, a few people took offense to the fact that we were referred to as older people instead of over 55 or something like that. And the other thing that's sort of controversial is the shared spaces, because that's different from what we've operated under currently, because we're gonna be sharing the space with the apartment dwellers. But I think we're, that's been worked out pretty efficiently, I think, as well.
I think we'll call them tenants, not apartment dwellers. Residents would be better. Mr. Greve, sounding like a horror movie for Friday night. Mr. Greve?
Tom Greve, 110 Thayer Drive. Hopefully, I can help Mr. Sevigny with some of his misunderstandings or not-understandings. or not understandings. The lease is the same, but the situation is not. In the previous lease, the town was leasing a building that they owned. They could make the rules. In this, the town is leasing a condo in a building a third party owns, and the third party can make the rules for that building. There is a lease for the land for that building to the town, which does say we have this condo. It doesn't say any of the rules under which that condo will be used. I've bought condos myself in my life, and I know there's always a condo agreement that goes with a condo that has those rules laid out. Either somebody should say there isn't one and there's never going to be one, and you can do whatever you want, or that piece of paper needs to be looked at to see what the constraints on the use of that condo by the third-party owner are going to be.
I believe that has already been given and signed by senior center management two to three years ago.
Yeah, there's a memorandum of understanding, there's a memorandum of understanding which outlines the, you know, broadly, the way the senior center will provide services and how church or the Audiathoon House will receive and participate in that. But that was signed in 2023, I believe.
Yeah, and nothing, nothing in that memorandum of understanding has been changed, right?
No, I don't believe it's been changed.
We don't, we don't have, we don't have the baseball field. It's senior housing, not elderly housing.
All right, we've litigated all of this.
I understand that. Mr. Sevigny doesn't understand why people are concerned when they get something that is lined out that they don't understand and the people that lined it out aren't there to tell them what it is. That's what I'm trying to get across to you. I'm not saying don't sign this tonight. It's your lease. You should sign it. This is what you want. My point is the situation is different for these, for the seniors at the senior center. And you need to give them the ability, the time to get a lawyer if that's what they want. And with the three to six vote that we had the other day, I would think that's a good indication that they do want that. So why not give it to them? A board.
The senior center board and staff have until November seventh to sign this or find their stuff in the parking lot. That is where we're at right now. It's a harsh reality, and I don't want this to come to that. But come November tenth, either the stuff is coming out of the senior center into a truck and being moved someplace, or it's going into the new senior center. The third option is leave it where it is, and it ends up in a dumpster and taken to Johnston. We need to move forward. This has been litigated for six years now.
Nobody's saying don't move forward. Nobody said that.
But we're saying November tenth, if this is happening, and if they want to drag it out, they've had since September fifteenth to have a lawyer look at it, and they haven't. Why are they dragging their feet?
I don't think they knew the November tenth deadline until very recently.
I knew that the original deadline and the goal, when the shovel was put in the ground, when we were all there, was September first.
And the MOU that was signed and was not changed has January first.
That's a placeholder. But it doesn't matter.
You're right, it doesn't. It doesn't.
And all the other arguments about senior versus elderly, the baseball field is an unfortunate situation.
It certainly is.
A bigger casualty is members of this community writing letters to the DEM saying, don't give them any money for a playground workout area for the senior center for a project that's probably never going to happen. That was pretty rude of somebody in this.
Okay, I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
I'll provide you with the letter.
Okay.
Mr. President, motion to approve the lease agreement as presented with the changes of the administrator.
I know I recused myself, but I just have a question for Mr. Rayner. Can I ask him a question as a, as a citizen?
Technically, no. In the eyes of the Ethics Commission, you're not a citizen.
He's mentioned.
I'm sorry. It's weird to say it like that, but.
For your own goodness.
Yeah. Ms. McDowell, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I think we're just missing the boat here. It's all about the psychology of the situation. I know that, well, I've heard, and I believe it, the lease was sent out on September fifteenth. When I attended that meeting, though, I saw a copy that had all the red lines in it. Now, these people must have seen that same copy the night before with the red lines in it. This is scary to some people, whether you want to agree with it or not, especially an entity or an organization that's entering into something, this big thing. I don't, I think they're very thrilled about this. But it's scary to see a contract that's going to be binding with red lines. That's all. It's about psychology. It's not about, I think it's not about anything else. And again, I'm just sad that this was the process. That's all. Very sad that it could have been avoided if it had been done a little differently. That's what I think.
I believe, wholeheartedly, I agree with you. But I think there are actors on the other side that make it more of an issue than it is and try and paint the town in a bad light.
There are always actors on any given issue that, actors, people, that have a different point of view. This could have been, it's psychology. People see this stuff. These people from the senior center saw that redlining stuff, and as I would have, I would have gotten nervous. Just give me an opportunity. It's probably, the lawyer will give his blessing probably very quickly. But it should have been done differently, I think.
They've had it since the fifteenth to have a lawyer look at it.
They, it's not the same thing they got, though, Keith. It really isn't. It's red line.
The red line version they got last week. Have they had a lawyer look at it yet?
Well, they were going to the next day. I don't know. I haven't.
Okay, well, then it's a moot point.
Those red lines came from the board. We didn't create those red lines. Those red lines came from the board.
Yeah.
So if you have a hard time reading a contract with red lines.
This, hang on.
I said it before. When the red line copy went out, along with it, in the very same email, was the clean copy. So, and I sat right next to somebody who thought all she had was the red line copy. Most of us had both copies. So I don't know where she was coming from, but they had the clean copy. So they didn't have to be careful about trying to figure out what's underlying, what's been changed. We gave it to them so they'd know where the changes occurred, which were all minor. So.
Mr. Gleason?
Thank you. Oh, first off, I've been the liaison for this committee here for some time now. And this is our third chair since I've been in there. And they've all had their different kind of flavor of how the meetings have been run. But what sticks on me the most is the last chair was told, you know, publicly that there is no guarantee that this space is going to be signed over to the seniors from Church Community. That was said, and I think it instilled some fear in people.
I would like to know where and when that was said to her.
I heard it, so I don't know if I can document it for you. But the bottom, the bottom line is, as it stands right now, there is, an MOU goes back to September of twenty-three, I believe. And Cindy sent us out some money. Cindy runs the senior center. She sent us a couple of emails, you know, there was back and forth where Mr. Bellin couldn't even produce it. He didn't have it on file. And it was also brought to our attention that they didn't have a signed copy. I do know that it never went to the board, and it was probably signed by the chair at the time and/or Cindy, or Cindy through the chair. So people are aware of that business. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. It's just a lot of variables that the seniors had to deal with. And they're just regular people trying to make decisions for the senior center. So I relate to Mary, what she has said. It's not going to change. And myself, I've got dizzy looking at some of the paperwork. I was sent a red line copy online. I couldn't open it. And when I did open it, there weren't any red lines on it. So I saw the red line copy that was handed to me when I went into the meeting to see it. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I'm just saying there's a lot of variables that took place here. Now, Thursday, there's a meeting set up as of today's meeting for Mr. Bellin to attend there to make this memorandum of understanding into a service agreement. At this point in time, unless you can tell me differently, there isn't a service agreement. And the town, really, that's, there's four different moving parts here. There's an agreement we're talking about tonight between the town and the seniors. And then you have community between, community housing in the seniors. And we have a ground lease agreement with the town. It gets confusing.
I did just, just to add some clarity if I can, right? So I got introduced to this September fifteenth.
And I just, if I'm confused, I think there were seniors that are confused as well.
Understandable. And I think, I think the, I know it's a subtle difference, but I think the language matters. When we talk about a services agreement versus a service agreement, I think the memorandum of understanding is the services agreement. Basically, it's the agreement for the senior center to provide services to the residents of church. And so it's not a service agreement in the terms of we are going to change your light bulbs, we are going to shampoo your carpets, we are going to, you know, maintain the heating system. I think that's what people were looking for because they heard service agreement and thought there was some sort of back and forth. Really, there's only three agreements. And that's, I think, key to this whole understanding. There's the ground lease, the lease to the town, and the agreement with the senior center. And that, that, sorry, the ground lease and the agreement with the senior center and the memorandum, even now, I'm trying to clarify and confusing it, right? The three agreements. So there's, there should not, there doesn't need to be a new fourth agreement. I think what church has said is if there's something that is in that MOU from 2023 that in light of two years of, you know, thought and consideration, we would like to see modified. They're willing to entertain that. But as of right now, we have all the agreements, aside from this one, signed, sealed, and delivered. So there's nothing else we're waiting on. There's nothing else that we have to provide in order to get this done and get the senior center up and running come November fourteenth, except as was pointed out, the CEO has to get issued.
Sure. So again, just backing up and being at the last meeting, and, you know, I know we can't hear from Charlene on this to back me up. But I think what we heard from Mr. Bellin was, all right, we're going to sign this services agreement Thursday. And iron this thing out, we're going to have that as well. So the seniors are looking for the lease between the town and the service agreement, for what it's worth. Okay? My two cents on this document, and maybe this is wrong and it's just generic here, but where the town is responsible for the major structural items, we show on this paperwork the roof. I don't know that the town should be paying for any roof repairs unless it's a separate roof, and I don't believe it is. So I don't know if you have it in the document, Mr. Rayner.
Yeah, that's why I figured out it's modified. Maintenance requirements, one thousand dollars and above. That language came from the previous lease.
Right. But you wouldn't put, you wouldn't put it into the roof, would you?
No, no. So let's say that the senior center says that they want a different window design. They wouldn't be authorized to do that because it's consistent with the entire building. So obviously, that language needs to be finessed. That's why we're proposing that it just states maintenance requirements, one thousand dollars and above. That mirrors what's in their current lease agreement with the acknowledgement that this isn't a building that we can go in. We're not going to be responsible for replacing the roof. We're not going to be responsible for moving walls, so on and so forth. You know, heating systems, that'll be Audiathoon House property management, stuff like that. But let's say there's a carpet that needs to be replaced, and that's, that's an expensive proposition. That's the town responsibility, just as it is now. It'd be over a thousand dollars. There's no question asked. That's in their lease. But if they want to change a keyboard, that's going to be their responsibility.
Very good.
To clarify what Mr. Gleason's asking, because it's listed as we're the lessor, we would be responsible for the roof, but Church Community is responsible for the roof, and that's in our agreement with them.
That's in the ground lease agreement with them, correct.
Right.
So does that have to be changed in here? Does that, you said it has to be finessed. Shouldn't it not be there?
Yeah, that's what I said when I was reading out the things that would be changed. We, that would just be worded, maintenance responsibilities, one thousand dollars and above. Those are major responsibilities that would be assumed by the town.
There are, under item thirteen, it says, lease lessor shall be responsible for all structural maintenance and major systems, including roof, windows, plumbing, electrical, heating, landscaping, parking.
Right, if we're going to change that, just the same way we're going to change the twenty years to ten years and the date, the start date. That's what we're discussing tonight.
So that would come out, correct?
Thank you. Mr. Sevigny?
Is there any question on the distinction between the MOU, also known as a service agreement, and the lease stuff?
The only, the only question I have right now, me personally, is whether or not I'm going to be able to wake up from my flight at six o'clock.
Hey, hey, hey. Who says there's no nightlife in Portsmouth?
Yeah. No, I think we are good. Any other questions on the lease? It's going to be amended to remove that paragraph or has been amended to remove that paragraph, but it wasn't put in to our backup in time because of the agenda timing.
Second paragraph in thirteen.
Correct.
Needs help.
It needs removal.
And the date and the term.
The date and the term.
Ten, ten years, yeah. So by passing this motion, the council gives the authority for the council president to sign, but still leaves the option of the senior center president to sign.
Yes.
Correct.
We're not signing for them.
We're correct.
I'm signing, I would be signing for the council and the town. Once it's amended, I think. You'll amend it in the morning, and I'll sign it on Thursday morning. Barring any flight delays on the way back.
Vote for vote.
We already did. We have a motion and a second.
Let's do it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Ms. Patton, you can come back from the Netherlands with one recusal. Motion passes six to zero with a recusal. Chief, come on up, buddy. You could have asked. We would have moved you up to new business two. New business number two, request money from the National Opioid Settlement in the amount of nine thousand, eleven dollars and five cents. That's pretty specific there, chief. To cover the cost of two Sapphire intravenous pumps with cradle mounts, four Pelican cases. I feel like we're getting into Christmas. Three stat bags and security house, the, two securely house, the IV pumps, incredible medications. I'm assuming this goes along with the fact that we are now paramedic certified, and we need these new toys.
So, Mr. President, council members, part of this in money that you previously approved in my operating budget and going to the paramedic level. I've already been, had been before you, and we discussed purchasing these particular pumps. Or that was what the budget was for. It's come to my attention that we would be much better off, residents, patients would be much better off, the two frontline ambulances to have an additional pump. These pumps are utilized, again, at the paramedic level to do precise metering of medications that are critical. Some medications, they can give in one shot, but that doesn't work as well. Others have to wait till the hospital. These pumps allow for a specific dosage over the long term, and the quality of life, the outcome, better outcome and the quality of life has been proven to be better for those patients. I think I have a little bit of a change from what maybe you have in front of you, but I, because I had a last-minute request. From the opioid, the reason I'm looking for money from the opioid fund for this is this is Paramount Two opioid overdoses. Not that they wouldn't be utilized in other patients. But we all know, we've heard of Narcan, but these pumps allow other medications to be given to that opioid patient in addition to the Narcan. I originally asked for a total of the nine thousand, eleven, eleven thousand, five cents. And as you stated, that was for the two pumps and all the cases to. that was for the two pumps and all the cases to protect them while they're in the apparatus and medications also. Also in that number is $1,264 for an additional, uh, portable suction equipment. That's going to go directly in our new A M S chase vehicle. The other thing that, so that's the $9,011, but I also would need, I'm asking for, an additional 888 per year going forward. And I'm sure that's going to have a price increase, but that is the maintenance agreement for these pumps. So I would like to, in your, hopefully you approve this, that that would be continuing as long as we're getting those funds. The one other item, um, if you're so inclined, is, um, a one-shot time, $1,300 for initial purchases of paramedic level, level medications. Once we have these, in almost every situation, when we go to the hospital and transport a patient, the hospital exchanges what we've used, but we do have to come up with those initial, additional, initial medications.
So the way I look at it right now, but we can pay for the initial 888 and then I think we should discuss that in terms of the larger budget going forward.
Okay.
So we'll pay for the first year in the opioid settlement if this is okay with the council, the 1,300 and then the 911, 9,011 and 05, so which would be, I'm going to round up here sometime.
10, 3, 11, 05, not counting additional 888.
No. Including the 888 for this year.
This year.
For this year.
That, that's it. Yes, the 9,011 includes that.
Includes the first 888.
Includes this year's 888.
Perfect.
So the 9,011 plus 13 is 10, 3, 11, 05.
Perfect. And then we can have a discussion about the availability of funds for opioid and future budgets for the 888 going forward during the budget process, if that's okay.
That's terrific.
All right, so that way everybody has a great understanding of.
The service plan is just.
It's an annual service.
A new budget item.
Right.
Okay.
That we can decide if we want to because it is opioid related, we could take it from there, but let's just, let's do that in the budget process, if that's okay with everybody. Ms. McDowell?
I just have one question about the 1,300. Is that our right to take it out of that grant, um, with the op, uh, is, because it is more far-reaching, the other, the other section of money was clearly related to the drug.
Well, th- this would be for those drugs that are utilized in those cases. Again, it doesn't mean that drug maybe not, won't be used on another individual that's not suffering from opioid overdose, but those are medications that we would want to have with us in those cases.
So it would make sense that you could use those funds for that purpose?
I believe so.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would motion to approve the request for money from the National Opioid Settlement Funds for the items as requested by G Ford.
Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Chief, before you go.
Thank you very much.
I would like to thank your, um, firefighters, men and women, um, for services granted to a family member over a couple of times in the past couple of months, they've done a fantastic job. So tell them all thank you.
I will, and thank you.
Next we have correspondence, one, two, three, four and five. I know we want to pull number one. I'm going to ask that all council members email the woman or man on this thing and ask them to specifically send you these updates. They come out on a regular basis, ask them to email them directly to you. So that way you have them. South Coast Wind LLC Post-Hair Memorandum. Reach out to Partridge Snow and Han and say, here's my email address, please put me on your distribution list. So that way you'll get them ahead of time and not just see them here.
And you're pulling correspondence one?
You, you wanted to pull that, so we'll put it on the next agenda, yes. So we need a motion to pull number one and put the other ones on.
Can I just clarify, is that, is that Partridge Snow and Han or that would be the Energy Facility Siting Board who I think maintains that docket?
Thank you.
Partridge Snow and Han has been, they have.
Docket notice list.
But what Partridge Snow and Han and one other one has been sending out regular updates or if something happens, which is why Partridge Snow and Han is on this, she's the one that sent it as correspondence to the council. I think it's a she, I'm not looking at the, the form right now.
I believe so, but I, okay, so it, it, it would only provide whatever they decide to, to deliver, but we can add the town council to the, the notice distribution from the, the, that, the, the Energy, Energy Facility Siting Board maintains a, a list of 100 people to get notices, however many it is. And, and they then notify all the involved law firms to say, send it to all these people. So if you want to be thorough about it.
Perfect.
That's the way to do.
So why don't we just ask them to add towncouncil@portsmithri.gov?
We can, we can, we can make that happen.
Perfect. Thank you. Staff will take.
I'm not sure you want that to happen, but you can always change your mind and we can pull it off if you get too many.
The great thing about cell phones is you just go, and it's gone.
Yeah, well, that's like a 600-page document, so it takes longer.
So.
You still want to pull that?
Okay, so the motion would, would be to receive and place on file correspondence two through five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Future meetings, we have November, November 10th. Uh, we have November 24th and then we have December 8th. And we're going to discuss legislative priorities that night. So if you have any priorities that you want to get in front of our legislators, please get that to the clerk's office as soon as you can so that we can put it together. And we also, we don't want to, we want to get that to them before the agenda goes out so that they can do some research ahead of time, give them a little extra time. So if you can do it maybe before the November 24th meeting, that would be great.
Mr. President, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven.